Well, the only way I can find them downloaded is like one page at a time and real slow.
Is your computer in it?
That must not be the right one.
I got it.
Yeah, there.
I got it.
You're probably doing it from.
What did you draw?
You just do it.
Uh, you need one.
Nobody rough than me.
Sadman.
Tracy was stealing it.
Great.
Guys ready?
No.
How about you?
Super.
I like it.
Warner. How you doing, buddy?
Good.
Good to see you.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the April twenty-second, two thousand thirteen Planning Commission. I'd like to remind everybody to please set yourself, your phones to silent. And if anybody of the audience needs listening device, please talk to staff. I'm sure they'll set you up. Mr. Garner, would you please call it off?
Anything? Honcho?
Here.
Cook?
Yep.
Winston?
Here.
Bunch?
Here.
Noble?
Here.
Autry?
Here.
Hoskins? Chesser?
Here.
Sorry. Thanks. The first item we have is the consent agenda. And then vacation for school in Ferguson's addition. Vacation number thirteen dash forty-three forty-six.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Cook? Make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
I have a motion in a second. Mr. Garner, would you please call it off?
Honcho?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Bunch?
Yes.
Noble?
Yes.
Autry?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Chesser?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. The first item of old business is administrative item forty-three thirty on the corner of Fifteenth Street and Reacherback Road. The applicant has requested that this item be tabled. Is this indefinite?
We're requesting for two more weeks until your next meeting.
Okay. Any motion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Cook?
Go ahead. I'd like to make a motion to table administrative item thirteen dash four three three zero till the May thirteenth.
Second?
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Cook and a second by Commissioner Chesser. Mr. Garner, would you call it off?
Honcho?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Bunch?
Yes.
Noble?
Yes.
Autry?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Chesser?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. The next item is administrative item thirteen dash forty-three forty-four for Now and Then Boutique. Let's see who has this. Mr. Garner, will you give us a staff report?
Sure. I'll pull up the property here in Google Earth. You can see this is at six seventeen College. It's at the corner of College Avenue and Trenton Boulevard. As background, this property was built quite a few years ago with a commercial building. Was removed in the late eighties. The parking lot remains in the property. For the past three years, there've been a continual number of outdoor mobile vendors on the property. There've also been several variances granted by the Planning Commission to allow for vendors to be on the property longer than the allowable ninety days. To get your variants again on where we're at here, this is just across the street from the skating rink. And then to the east, to the north, there's motel and apartments. And to the south, commercial. And then to the west, there's single-family residence. The applicant of this item and also for the next item, I'll kind of give a brief presentation on both of them. They're both mobile vendors that are requesting to be on the property for longer than ninety days. The code allows for a maximum of ninety days to be operating out of a temporary structure. And the variance process could allow for up to one year in one place. And so Now and Then Boutique and then also the next item on your agenda for Purity Pie Company are both asking for the same variance to be on this property at six seventeen College. They've turned in site plans, kind of showing where the trailers are that they're operating out of. Now and Then Boutique is a retail vintage clothing store. And in the findings for your variances, we've made findings for this, this application and the next one, Purity Pie Company, that we don't feel like these vendors will exacerbate a adverse traffic situation. The access into and out of this property is probably not ideal. It doesn't meet our current access management codes, but it has been operating safely to our knowledge for the past couple of years. So we feel like the, the, the variances for these vendors wouldn't exacerbate the existing situation. We are recommending that with the approval of these variances, the Planning Commission have a condition of approval about limiting access in the future. And I'll go into that here in a minute. One of the findings that the Commission has to make for both of these variances is that the presence for an extended period of time on this property will not create an unfair advantage over similar and nearby permanent businesses. And so that's what we've discussed mainly in your staff report. On this first one, Now and Then Boutique, there are quite a few retail clothing stores within a half mile of this location. They're all selling very, you know, similar products. And the applicant did notify all the adjacent property owners in writing of the application. And then because of, we identified that there's quite a few potential competitors that could be affected by this, we actually went and passed out notices to quite a few of the businesses that I was aware of that had, were very similar. And we haven't heard any objections from many of those business owners. And, you know, I'm sure we'll open it for public comment if anybody wanted to speak tonight. But my perception in reviewing this is that the type of businesses here have really started to create kind of a destination for these vintage retail clothing stores in this area. And so not only do these types of vendors not hurt some of the existing brick and mortar, they probably actually help some of the existing brick and mortar by drawing in more traffic and kind of getting kind of a critical mass of different stores to go to. So we feel like these are appropriate for the Now and Then Boutique. Wouldn't have any adverse impacts to the, or an unfair advantage over the existing brick and mortar businesses. On the other application for the Purity Pie Company as well, they're selling a pretty unique product, I think, as far as they're selling like pie by the slices, their main product. And you can buy whole pies as well. Sure.
I'm going to, she is not renewing her lease with me. She notified me yesterday. But there will be a new business.
Okay, well, that's, I don't know. Any questions that you have, if you could, just please wait until that, that comes to us. That, that's fine. We'll, we'll address that whenever that comes around. Thank you.
Okay. But you'll see in the conditions of approval here, we do recommend in favor of, of these variances. Condition of approval number one, just list the actual timeframe for the variance to make sure it's clear to the applicant and staff to enforce it. Condition of approval number two is related to one of the findings that the Commission can make. He goes on further in the ordinance to state that the Commission can require certain improvements to property to kind of level the playing field between the brick and mortar businesses and these temporary businesses. So staff has recommended that this property owner dedicate right-of-way along College Avenue and Trenton Boulevard in accordance with our master street plan. And that would typically be required of a large-scale development if you're building like a commercial development. And the city is in the process of designing. And we will be doing street improvements to College Avenue, including this property within the next couple of years with the next round of city bond projects to extend the improvements from downtown all the way north to North Street. And so to facilitate and, and get ahead of the curve on this property, we're asking the owner to go ahead and dedicate the right-of-way to the city at this time. And we have put in here, within thirty days of approval of this, these variances, that the owner should be turning in a warranty deed to the city for review and then have that reported at the county. One of the other things we're recommending as well is when the city goes through and does this, the improvements to College Avenue, we end up closing up curb cuts and pouring driveway aprons and things like that. And so on this property along College Avenue, we're recommending that the owner go ahead and agree to allow for only one curb cut, which would be a legal size. And go ahead and put that on the warranty deed when they, when they dedicate right-of-way. They could put a note on there, which I have put in here, the language on your condition. The note would indicate that the owner agrees to limit access to one curb cut on College, the exact location and dimensions to be determined at a later date with consultation of city staff. And I did talk to the property owner a couple of days ago. And she was concerned that that would, if we had that, that would also limit her access on Trenton Boulevard in the future. And so I wanted to go ahead and maybe add language to this condition that, you know, say, this condition is not intended to limit a new legal curb cut onto Trenton in conformance with the access management ordinance. So if the property owner does want to construct another access point onto Trenton, you know, I think that would be fine as long as it meets code. I did want to point out as well, condition of approval number three just states that if other variances on this site are requested, staff may likely recommend more extensive improvements typical of a permanent business. And we've included a site plan in the packet, kind of showing how a parking lot would be, if it were brought up to one hundred percent compliance, what it would look like. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Is the applicant available? If you could just tell us your name and.
Okay, my name is Becky Peters. And the other owner of Now and Then Boutique is here Clara Peters. I'm an apparel studies student at the University of Arkansas. And we just kind of started this business to give me some experience in something that I really want to do and pursue. And we just want the variance for, from ninety days to one year so that we, so that we can build our business into eventually getting a brick and mortar store. If you have any other questions.
Okay, then we'll call you back up if we have anything.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Is there any member from the public here to speak to this? Okay, seeing none, I'll close it and bring it back to the Commissioner. Commissioner.
Sure.
Commissioner Hoskins?
Question for the applicant or I guess it'd be the property owner, I guess, but maybe staff already knows this. Do you know what the depth of this property is from North College? As far as the east-west dimension?
I don't know. I could approximate it here on Google Earth if you want.
I think the property owner is here, actually.
I'm here, but I, I, I don't think my glasses are.
Ma'am? If you come up to the podium.
Okay, I, I don't know.
Introduce yourself.
Off the top of my head, I don't know.
Can you introduce yourself, ma'am?
Cynthia Morris, and I'm the property owner. This is just something temporary we're doing. We just bought this and thought it would be interesting for the community. As people pay their rent, we're putting the money back into improvements. I'm just speculating on this property, hope to build a permanent building there for somebody in the future or sell the lot.
Does that mean you don't know the depth of the property?
I don't know the depth of the property. And I'm a real estate appraiser, I should know things like that.
It appeared, just on Google Earth, this ballpark is about a hundred and fifty feet deep.
Okay. As far as our access management ordinances that would require.
You'd have to get a variance in order to put a driveway under Trenton, I think.
Right.
Yeah, well, Trenton is, is a local street, so it'd probably have to be fifty feet from the intersection. So there's a, there's a potential, they would, we talked about, there's a wall right there. So they would have to probably do some retaining walls, right? Rebuild a section or parts of that wall.
It, it would be major construction to do that. But if the lot is, I mean, that would never be done until a real building was being built there.
I just wanted to make sure you understood that there could be some.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it'd have to have grading back and, I mean, some, some serious engineering would have to be done.
So while I got you up here, so do you, are you okay with staff's recommendation approval about the dedication of right-of-way?
Yes, I guess you don't get any compensation for this.
Not, not when you dedicate the property. We do require land developers and persons like in your situation who is developing businesses here to dedicate as long as it's not beyond the rough proportionality of the impact on our infrastructure needs that your businesses are causing. In other words, your businesses cause traffic. And so we're not actually requesting that you build a sidewalk or enlarge the street. But what the city is requesting is that you dedicate sufficient right-of-way that when we improve.
Okay, so you will be paying for the sidewalk.
Yeah, and that's, believe it or not, that's much more major.
Yeah, there's the money, there's the money in your pocket.
Well, I mean, you'll improve my property if you put a, a nice sidewalk up there.
And it will be a nice one. It'll be similar to what you see up the street, just to the south.
Okay, okay. No, I want to work with the city on this and to improve the property and make college. I think college looks better since we have put the mobile vendors in. When I bought the lot, it had never even been cleaned up from the ice storm. And so I've done a lot of improvements to the lot since I purchased it. I bought it in March last year. Thank you.
Thank you. And then one other, I want to ask staff about one other thing. Andrew, is there something that we can put in this that, I know they parked the Airstreams out there and that's fine, but it seems like they, they come along behind that and add ancillary structures like porches with Visqueen on it or what have you. And I don't know if, if that even got approved through Building Safety or the Fire Marshal or what have you. North College is a fire district. So my guess is, is there probably should have been some, some conversation with the city before that was ever constructed. Is there some way that we can put a condition of approval on this that, that anything that's constructed out there other than what they're parking there, the Airstreams or what have you, needs to come through staff and for approval?
I think, you know, they just need to follow the city ordinances. So you could, you could put a condition on that, the condition would be violated if, if the city ordinances were not followed, all of them on this.
Let me refine, let me refine my comment then. Part of the, part of this ordinance about is the aesthetically pleasing landscape or streetscape. Right. And, and matter of personal opinion or whatever, but those type of structures, I don't find aesthetically pleasing at all. And so I would like to see some type of condition of approval that would, that would limit what could be built up in front of the, the Airstreams or what have you. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
If I could maybe address that. I did talk to the Fire Marshal just about that specific tent. We talked to them about it before they were, it was installed. Being a temporary structure, the Fire Department didn't have problems with it being a fire district one. Permanent business could not have certain types of materials, but they were okay with that. As far as being able to limit the style and the, the looks of this type of development and the vendors, I think the Commission can add those sorts of conditions to it if they choose, because that's, that is part of the ordinance. So I think whatever the Commission feels comfortable with as far as the looks, you know, we would have to figure out how to craft it so we could tie it specifically to these vendors. It'd be difficult for, you know, future vendors to, you know, but we could do it, I think, with each individual application.
Well, I guess, I guess my thinking is, is one, like, I think there's some spots around the square down Dixon Street that the sidewalk vendors, when they're located there, they have to be very, very specific, all the way to part size and shape. Show us a picture of whatever of what's to be located there. And so in this case, where there's absolutely zero control at this point of, of what goes on this property is a, a far, it's quite a distance away from what we require of other mobile vendors around town. And so it seems to me like we would be doing a smart thing as a commission to include some type of language about that.
Did you have any suggestions?
I'd like to hear from the rest of the Commission. See what their opinion is or what have you.
Mr. Chair, I would, I would tend to agree with the previous Commissioner. The only objection I have is that Visqueen material. I know that's probably your least expensive way out and to do it, but it, it doesn't really have a real good curb appeal. And you can have certain winds come through there that could, that could be gone rather quickly. So that's just my initial reaction to that Visqueen there.
Okay. I kind of get the feeling we could talk it around all night, but until somebody comes up with a solution.
Let me make sure you, you don't mind then the actual like decks built on of these or anything? It's just a Visqueen? Is that what your issue is?
Are you asking me?
Yes.
I, I think that anything, I think that anything that's placed out there besides the vendor's apparatus, whatever, whatever their particular hut is, because I know, I went by there the other day and we've got the Airstreams, but now we've also got another trailer out there that's more of a little commercial trailer, whatever. And it's quite cool looking, by the way. But I think that anything that is built, that's set out there besides their main structure or semi-structure should be approved by staff at least. I think it, I think it's, I think we've got to give staff, at least give staff some, some latitude to make a determination if it's going to make for an aesthetically pleasing streetscape. I mean, it's better than having them come through the Commission every time they want to add something. I don't know, I've, I've got faith in staff that they can, that they can make that determination.
I guess my question is for staff or I guess for anybody unless anybody has some way to put that into a recommendation. I don't, I don't know how we progress from here.
We could draft something up once we know what the, basically the Planning Commission wants. And, and I know you might also talk to the landowner here, but, but we have to get a good sense of what the Planning Commission wants before we can draft something up.
That's what I mean.
Mr. Chair? Okay. I'll just kick in. I think that's a fine idea and I think staff can handle it. The idea being, I guess, that if, if an applicant wants to build something onto the trailer, that the idea is passed through staff and staff decides whether or not it is aesthetically pleasing?
Fosters aesthetically appealing streetscape.
Thank you, yeah. An aesthetically, fosters an aesthetically appealing streetscape. And I think that would, would cover it. That, that's actually already allowed under the ordinance for staff to review. So if there's something specific beyond, you know, if you specifically want to say, you know, any sort of supplementary items or yard furniture, things like that, decking have to match the appearance or complement the style of the Airstream trailers, you know, that's something I think we could enforce, you know, but just aesthetically pleasing streetscape, we already do enforce that, you know, if it, you know, so. So should, should that, the Visqueen covering have come to staff before it went up? It did and we did approve it. Oh, okay. So. There you go. We felt like it was okay.
Our staff is business friendly.
I might want to withdraw what I said a while ago. Look at Jesse looking down over there.
Two things. The lady that owned the Pie Company, her husband, that is his business, is building temporary structure with Visqueen covering. He builds them for Fashion Week in New York City. He travels all over the world and does that. He threw that up literally in one day. That's his profession. Now, someone else is going to rent that structure starting probably May seventh. She's putting in her applications. I don't know what their agreement is. I, I think she wants to keep the structure. The second part is, in my lease to them, I encourage them to have awnings, because when you open those doors and it's raining, it's really bad. You've got to have something over your door or it rains in. And so she did not get permission from me as the landowner. I was very shocked and all the other tenants did complain about the clear plastic. But then I was down there twice, met people. It was wonderful to be under that while it was pouring rain. So I kind of see both sides. But I do encourage all my vendors to do an awning if they can. That's really all I have to say is that it is encouraged because it's hard to do business without an awning over your door or it rains in. But she did not have my permission for that, but it did pass the Fire Marshal.
Okay, thank you. Well, in that vein, I don't know anything about awnings, but is there, it seems to be that the, the Visqueen is what's offensive to some. Is there any way that we could stipulate that it has to be fabric or attached or, I, I don't know.
You know, I don't know as far as my background or what have you. I think that if I pulled a permit to build that, I don't think I would have ever gotten it, especially in the fire district. And I know that staff's talked to the Fire Marshal, what have you, but, I mean, there's, I mean, I think in the fire district now, we can't even build anything out of wood as far as anything that somebody, that is unhappable. Don't look at me like that. I mean, it's basically metal studs and all that as far as unhappable space or what have you. But I would think that Visqueen, like he said a while ago, I mean, it could become a parasail across North College. And I mean, if the structure is not permitted or looked at by Building Safety, I mean, we had one here a while ago, not too long ago, to be erected out by Highway two sixty-five. And it was engineered and everything else and it was a canvas structure. Of course, and immediately after putting it up, it became a parasail. So, I mean, and that was engineered. So anyway, anything like that along North College kind of gives me the willies anyway. But, I mean, if, at least if Building Safety takes a look at it, then, I mean, they're going to make comments as far as whether it's going to be safe or not. So the safety is one thing, but as far as aesthetically pleasing, there's nothing I found about that that was aesthetically pleasing. And I mean, I would agree with her. I'd say you probably put it up in a day. So anyway, it's, it's just not something I would like to see up and down North College in Fayetteville.
Anyone?
Mr. Chair? Oh, go ahead. Commissioner.
Mr. Chair, I was, I guess I'm kind of in the middle on this in that I'm not sure I'd be willing to say that I'm against any ancillary structure. I can imagine wood decks and things, especially given that the, that the vending platforms are, usually you have to walk up into them. You know, I don't mind a deck to facilitate that, a solid wood deck. I agree with Commissioner Hoskins that I'm not sure that, even though that the, even though the mobile vendor is a temporary business by nature, I'm not sure we want to encourage this level of temporary. I think, I would agree that we could probably leave ancillary structure decisions to staff, but maybe with some direction based on our comments tonight. I'm not prepared to draft a, an amendment yet, but that's where I stand on the issue. Thank you.
Commissioner Wilson?
Well, there's a, there are trailer awnings that are attached to the trailer Airstreams. Came with them, I believe. We had an Airstream when I was getting.
It was optional.
It was, it's an option. There's, but there's.
You had an upper-class Airstream.
That's right.
It was, yeah, you know. It had an awning. And so it seems like the, the problem could be solved by adding official awnings to, to the trailers themselves. I guess that would be on the owners of the, owner of the trailers to make those improvements. You know? But it, it doesn't, it doesn't seem to make sense to me to have made-up awnings, let's say, you know, that aren't attached, that don't, that don't, that are sort of just, you know, built for an event. So is there anything that we could, we could draft that suggested that, that specifically awnings should be attached to the trailer and fabric? And, or something like that? That's just specific enough that it would say that, that, that they can't be.
Big tops.
Yeah, big tops, plastic. Yeah, big tops, uh, plastic, stuff that could fly away, something like that. And that, that staff would be, uh, charged with approving, uh, those, those awnings. And that the one that's on there has to be taken down.
Yeah, I think, I think that could be, that's something we could enforce, the specifics, like you talked about, you know, if, if you wanted to say awnings have to be made of fabric and attached to the airstream trailers, that's something we could enforce.
Mr. Chair. I have kind of a little bit of draft, which anybody is.
Before you read that, I, I wanna get some clarification. Master, I, I did not catch your name, I apologize.
Cynthia Morris.
Morris, Ms. Morris. The way I understand it, the way that you're describing the setup currently is that you own the property. And then do you have separate owners of airstreams throughout?
Yes.
Okay.
I actually now own two. I just, so I have one that is rented to Becky Peters and it's just clear inside. It can be a gift shop or a clothing store.
Okay.
Uh, I did just buy the new one that you see that's arrived there, the silver one with the lights, the food trailer. They're so expensive, it's really hard for people to make that big cash investment, not knowing if their permit's gonna be renewed. And so I thought, well, maybe it'd make more sense, uh, if I own the trailer and I rent it out to someone.
Well, that's, I just wanted to get a little bit of clarification before.
Those are the only two I own. Everybody else owns their own. The, the pie one, she is renting it from someone else that used to have it there on the lot, has not been able to sell it. It sells price is $37,000. So it's kinda hard for someone to buy that starting up. So we've got a lot of different situations. Pigment owns their own trailer, the photographer owns her own trailer.
Okay.
So we have a mix.
I just needed some clarification, I might be the only one that, that was not aware.
And, and there's different awnings, that the new awning on mine that I had built, I would hate to say it's specifically fabric, it's some kind of a rubberized canvas awning. So I, I really wouldn't want you to say fabric.
Well, I, I was just using, using the word.
Yeah, general.
I, I don't know what they're constructed of, I have no expertise there. But anyway, Commissioner Hoskins.
Of course, this is a rough state, of course, but, uh, facility shall be limited to the temporary vendor trailer only. Any ancillary structures or amenities shall be, uh, approved by staff prior to installation. Any, any awnings shall be made of canvas, shall be of canvas type and securely affixed to the structure.
Sounds?
Mr. Chair. Since I was drafting it, I'll give you an alternate, and I had one other opinion, which was that, um, I can imagine a couple of cases, uh, I know the mall does things like sidewalk sales in the spring. I can imagine a case where it might be acceptable to have a temporary, you know, a temporary temporary structure, I don't know what to call it. A temporary honoring, awning for a day or two. Um, I don't know how staff feels about that in this.
Pretty hard to enforce.
Kit says, no, that'd be hard to enforce. Okay?
Cause we're talking about just this site right now, we're not talking about this all over town.
In that case, um, what I sort of jotted down was, um, to avoid the, the cloth question, to avoid the material question, what I said was, um, all permanent awnings must first be approved by staff, preference being given to equipment manufactured specifically to be used with the particular model of trailer to which it is to be attached. I mean, which kind of tries to catch what you were saying, that, um, staff should prefer the stuff that was manufactured to go with that trailer, under the assumption that it would be more, it would be designed to be more permanent and less likely to blow away. I can imagine a case where someone makes a, uh, an aftermarket version of the same thing, which I would be fine with. I don't know how that, do you feel about that, Commissioner Hoskins?
Well, we have awnings made for our projects or what have you, whether it's, whether it's an awning specified for the particular manufacturer model or what have you, I think you probably might limit people's creativity. I think that there's a lot of awning places that are perfectly capable of fitting a legitimately built awning to about any structure you can think of, even a round airstream.
And if you wanna hear a third version, I have one that I think might also help the owners a little bit, uh, because as you know, most of the trailers, and correct me if I'm wrong, you do have to step up a little bit to get into them. And so what my suggestion was, is that wooden decks, stairways and stoops, which are all kinda almost the same thing, to ease entering into a mobile vendor's trailers are permitted, but clear plastic coverings are not allowed. Awnings for the trailers should be made of fabric, rubberized canvas or other similar material and attached to the trailers. So, you know, you could get it from the manufacturer, but if you could find a local manufacturer, it could also attach to the trailer, it would still work. So that would be the condition I would suggest, that I think probably incorporates both, uh, Commissioner Chester's and, and Mr. Hoskins' language and intent.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Chester.
Um, I'm gonna move that we approve administrative item 13 dash 4344 with the addition of a conditional approval number four, um, to include the language just quoted by city attorney. But I would like to add, I'd like to add the following sentence to the end. Final approval to be determined by staff, so that staff has a slight amount of flexibility to determine what that material would be.
Andrew, did you catch that?
I, I did get it, I did have one question on the motion. So that, does that address the existing trailer that has the, the clear plastic visqueen? Is the intent of the commission to have them remove that as well?
That would be, uh, my intent would be for, for that to have to meet with staff's approval. I suspect it would not meet with staff's approval, given this new condition. My, I intend for this condition to apply retroactively to the structures which are currently.
Well, and we don't even have to worry about that because that's going to come before you. And so when that conditional use comes before you or becomes before staff, they can look at that. Well, because right now, uh, yeah, I guess it's gonna be tabled since she's leaving, so that's gonna be tabled, but then there'll be a new permit requested, uh, by the new tenant.
That's, that's fine with me, except I suspect that Commissioner Hoskins would like it to be removed sooner rather than later. We could wait for a year until a new tenant were approved.
I, I don't think that's, that's of our concern at this point.
I guess staff approved it originally. Okay, that's fair. That's fair.
Commissioner Hoskins.
On the contrary, I agree with Commissioner Chester. I think that, I mean, as far as the pie lady or whatever, she's on her way out, I think it needs to be removed with her on the way out. Um, I agree with Commissioner Chester, I mean, it could be sometime. I mean, just because she moves out doesn't mean that, that structure has to move out. And I wouldn't think. And so, I mean, it could be left there for the next tenant that rolls in or what have you. And I think, uh, I'm not positive, but, uh, that might be, may or may not be, you can give me a nod or a shake of your head, that may be one of the particular trailers that the, that the landlord owns. Okay, then it's not. But regardless, I, I think it should be, whether it was approved by staff or not, uh, you know, this, this is a new deal and new day, I think it should be, I think it should be removed.
The, the problem with that, and I probably agree with you from an aesthetic point of view, that it should be removed. However, that trailer is probably not before this commission right now. And so it's awful hard to put a condition saying we're gonna do something with that trailer when it's not before us.
What about putting a condition with it as, once that trailer is gone, it's removed?
I think what you might do is, is ask staff in the future, even with their 90-day permit, that they look at this kind of language and, and take this as the intent of the planning commission, that in this sort of situation, this is the language they'd like you to enforce. As part of the aesthetically pleasing and appearing streetscape.
And not to belabor the, the amendment or what have you, the city's attorney's version is fine. I think that the intent of my version was, is anything that they put out in front of those trailers, be them awnings or steps or stoops or porches or decks or patios, whatever you wanna call it, staff needs to take a look at it. You know, there might be people that are not so familiar with our code, that you can't have, you know, three 10-inch steps, instead it's gotta be four, seven and a half inch steps. I mean, there are, are codes that need to be followed for safety purposes or what have you. And whenever you get in a trailer situation, sometimes people follow them, sometimes they don't. I think that anything that's put out in front of those trailers should be at least looked at by staff. As far as any awnings or what have you, if they're canvas type or what have you, then they are going to be the rubberized fabric or fabric or what have you. So I think, and, and in my motion or in my, uh, condition or whatever, it states that they have to be professionally fixed to, to the structure, so.
Okay. Commissioner. Thank you.
I wanna second his motion, if there was one, I couldn't remember, but I also wanted to, uh, also wanna say, I guess, really what we're talking about is design standards for temporary structures or for mobile vendors. I mean, you're stepping off into a whole different realm there. Cause I mean, it's in the eye of beholder, some people may like that structure or some not, but anyway. I just wanna make sure on the motion with staff, that this also includes the language about the Trenton access as far as the curb cut for Trenton. Potential future curb cut, I wanna make sure that was in there too. Yeah?
I'm sorry, my understanding was that was in the existing conditions.
It is, okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Chester and a second by Commissioner Tuck. Any other comments?
Uh, I need to ask the motioner, does this include the language, the additional?
Yes.
I added the attorney's language and I even added a sentence to say that I would like staff's approval, basically staff to take a look and make a final decision on it.
Thank you.
Mr. Garner, will you please cover up?
Honcho?
Yes.
Cut.
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Bunch?
Yes.
Noble?
Yes.
Autry?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Chester?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, and Andrew, I guess the next item, since we, uh, thank you. That's the, uh, the next item, since it's tabled or?
I, I think you probably should table it since we haven't actually heard from the applicant herself.
Okay.
And, you know, if they wanna, if you would ask them maybe to notify planning personally to, to drop this and then, then we can get rid of it then. But I, I would ask, actually recommend you table it indefinitely, which means you can still bring it back up.
Okay.
But it also could just be over.
Mr. Chair. Oh, I don't know if you need to hear the item read by staff yet or what the protocol is, I'm sorry. Mr. Chair, I move that we table administrative item 13 dash 4357 indefinitely.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Chester and a second by Commissioner Winston. Uh, Mr. Garner, will you please cover up?
Honcho?
Yes.
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Bunch?
Yes.
Noble?
Yes.
Autry?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Chester?
Yes.
And Ms. Morris, that, that's, that resolves everything as far as that goes. If you, like Andrew said, if you could just have your applicant come back, just contact city and let them know what's going on with it. Thank you. Okay, the, uh, next item is, uh, large-scale development on, uh, the corner of Spring and School Street, LSD 134352. Before we get into this, I'd just like to, uh, point out that this is the last public hearing for the parking deck, that, uh, this is, this is not a discussion as to whether or not we need one or where it's gonna be. We know where it's going to be, this is strictly for, uh, to make sure that the, the deck is complying with all the ordinance, um, requirements for the city. And with that, I'll turn it over to staff. Mr. Volter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Andy, I was gonna talk a little bit about the major milestones that the city has listed on the website about this project and how it kind of arrived at this point in 2013, you know, kind of touching on some of the points that, that you just made. But this is the large-scale development application by the city of Fayetteville for the downtown entertainment district parking deck. The recent history of this project starts in about 2011, November, where the city council authorized the use of bonds to move forward with, uh, the construction of a parking deck in the downtown area. There was initially four sites that were being looked at. Those four sites were pretty much discussed throughout 2012. That included geotech work on each of those sites, so taking core samples, it was probably to see the constructibility on those. And then in December of 2012, the city council approved the resolution, actually selecting the site that we're discussing tonight, which is the northwest corner of Spring and School. That's actually at the southeast corner of the Walton Art Center kind of campus site. And then the city council also reviewed several deck design options in March of this year and kind of the final selection was pretty much this design that you'll be seeing tonight. The overall deck facility will be 246 parking spaces. There will be two single-story liner buildings at the corner of Spring and School, kind of expanding away from that intersection, uh, totaling about 3,100 square feet. There will be a 16,000 square foot three-story administration building for the Walton Art Center. As part of this project, we'll be removing the existing Walton Art Center administration building. So as part of that agreement reconstruction, we'll be reconstructing comparable floor area for their offices and it'll be an integral part of the Walton Art Centers or of the parking deck structure, kinda be poured together and there will be some common elements as far as their walls and substructure. The subdivision committee looked at this project a little over a week ago, and we talked about several, um, parts of the deck as far as its design location. I think there was three main points that we talked about and that I described at that meeting. Two of those being variances, which, uh, we kinda commented about at the agenda session last week. Not something that, that I was hoping to see was the city bringing forward a project with a variance, but unfortunately, in this case, we had to, and I think there's very strong reasons, um, why they needed to be requested and, and why they're being supported, and I'll get into that as well. Uh, the first item that the planning commission supposed to determine is the design elements. Andrew, if you would pull up the southeast rendering of the site. Thank you. The downtown design overlay district code and design standards all adopted back around 2006, outlined the design requirements for a parking deck structure and gave, gave a developer three options. Either you could do a green screen on the site, you could utilize liner buildings, uh, or you could utilize, utilize display windows. The point is to not just build an overwhelming concrete deck adjacent to the street. That was, intent was to provide some, some interesting design elements to relate to the public realm and to create, uh, a structure to fit in with the downtown elements. What the design team came up with on the parking deck is actually a combination of those elements. So it's not entirely liner buildings, it's not entirely green screen, does not contain display windows. And rather than utilizing a green screen on the upper floors, which would actually be very, very challenging to maintain and probably never accomplish, they proposed a cementitious panel on those upper floors that provides a year-round screen out of a durable quality material. And so that doesn't actually technically meet the letter of the law, what the code says. The code says you're supposed to use all of one of these options. And so we're not using all of one of those options, we're using a combination of all of the options that are available in the code. Uh, and so that is a recommendation that we've made, that this is, uh, a very good design, it's meeting every bit the intent of the code, it's just an application of all those applications that's allowed. And so we're supportive of that, subdivision committee was supportive of the design that's been presented as well. Item two is a, a variance from the separation between doors. The downtown code requires when you have liner buildings, you cannot have a separation between doors greater than 50 feet. If you, uh, look at the east elevation here, and Andrew, if you could jump over to that east elevation, thank you. Here, you'll notice that the liner building, uh, is actually above grade because the street, school's falling down towards the intersection of Spring. And so the logical location would be at grade with the sidewalk, so it's on the very north section of this liner building. That liner building's 56 feet long, so you have to have another door. Unfortunately, that would put the door somewhere above grade, meaning you're either gonna jump out from above grade or climb out from below grade, obviously will not work. You cannot do that. So, um, the location really has to be set there. So again, we had to come forward with a variance, but it makes sense. You cannot add a second door in this location and you can't move the door down 6 feet to meet the code. The purpose of the code is to provide a number of entrances, so down the road, you can have maybe that space, that space split up for multiple tenants. The space is approximately 50 feet wide, certainly meets the code and there's really no way around the separation requirement there. On the south side of the building, uh, we had a similar discussion, there was, at the subdivision committee, about whether the code is being met on the 50-foot separation. We've added, or the design team has added, uh, or changed that elevation to show the door in the correct location. And they've also provided, uh, for Commissioner Winston, the commissioners that were there at subdivision committee, kind of a street view showing how that space will lay out, and that was part of the discussion at subdivision committee. But there are no, no issues with the entrance separation along South School, just this one, or excuse me, along Spring, just this one on, um, School. The third item is. The third item is a variance from the maximum separation. The code is written so that you have liner buildings and you don't have a great big wide opening. It gives you thirty feet to provide the entrance into the parking garage. So if you think, if you have two-way vehicular traffic, you're going to need approximately thirty, twenty-five, thirty feet, uh, interruption between your liner buildings. On the south facade of the building, that opening is about fifty-five feet. What that code probably didn't take into consideration is joint pedestrian and vehicular traffic entrance. You actually have stairs coming down from the upper decks, from the upper deck, um, exiting pedestrians onto the sidewalk. You also have pedestrians exiting from the ground floor onto the sidewalk. So you've got two vehicular passages coming out, then you have your entrance and exit. You have separation between the building walls, you don't want cars turning too close to the parking deck wall. And then any room you might have to have for ancillary structures such as a gate or card readers or anything that you might have as part of the parking deck, you're going to be well beyond thirty feet when you put all of those elements together. And that's exactly what's occurring here. It's not a, uh, an interruption, it's too wide, it's, it's the, it's the width necessary to, to provide all the, uh, entrance and exit movements, either it's pedestrians or vehicular traffic. And so this is a variance of that separation or of that width. Uh, but again, we believe that it's what's necessary to make a parking deck work. The thirty feet simply would not allow all of the elements that need to occur in this area. And then item four is determination of street improvements. All of the surrounding streets are improved streets, there's on-street parking. What would be occurring adjacent to this project, similar to any other downtown project, would be replacement of all the surrounding sidewalks, installation of the brick inlays, tree rails and street trees, and then street lights. And actually, the improvements will continue west along Spring to West Avenue, actually complete that block as well. There is a, overhead power lines in the area, something we've seen quite a bit on projects on large scales about a lot of those going underground in some situations. All of the existing overhead power lines are above twelve KB, which means there's no requirement to put those underground. Uh, the City of Fayetteville is working with the power company to actually relocate the overhead line on School Street underground. And so that is a expectation, that that's going to occur, it is not a requirement, and that is how we wrote it into the street improvement, something we hope to see from our conversations with the power company, that will be accomplished, but it is not a requirement. The overhead lines on Spring are, actually connect over to the, um, substation over by Powerhouse, very high voltage lines, those aren't going anywhere, those are going to stay there along Spring Street. There'll be a number of street improvements, uh, and utility improvements involved with this project as it moves forward. Uh, there are several other conditions of approval that are very straightforward for large-scale development. With that, I will end my presentation. Glenn Newman from Engineering Department's here, David Jurgens from our Utilities Department, our director there is here, as well as the design team from Garber and AFHJ Architects. So if you have specific design questions, please ask that to those members of the project team. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is the applicant available?
Which one would you like? Hey, I know him. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Let me introduce the team that's here today. Obviously, David Jurgens is the city's representative, he's a project manager for the city. I have Jeff Webb, project manager for Garber, Lolly Amerez, AFHJ, she's a lead architect. And my name's Ron Petrie with Garber. Uh, we're here to answer questions. Uh, I think Jesse's done a great job explaining the, the specific circumstances for those variance requests. We were given the instructions, no variance request. Apparently, we failed because that's, we had to ask for a few, but we really think we've minimized them and we have really good reasons for that. And, uh, and there's no miss queen on this. We'll be glad to answer questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any members of the public here to speak to this? Okay, saying done, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Hoskins.
Um, Jess, uh, the front facade of this building, does it sit right on the right-of-way?
Pretty much right on the right-of-way, I guess.
Right on the back of the sidewalk?
If we can, it sits back a little bit further off of Spring Street, but along School, uh, it's very close to the right-of-way line.
The reason I was asking is, as far as the code goes, that's what we're supposed to interpret here, I guess. Um, as far as that, that door, you said you could either crawl out of the basement or jump out of the, whatever. Of course, they also make stairs, which you can put outside of the door.
Yeah. You would be crossing, you'd have to, you'd probably land in the street from, from that distance. You would ultimately be crossing the sidewalk and actually in that, uh, southeast rendering, it actually is showing green space between the sidewalk and building and that is, uh, to our fault, but that is sidewalk all the way to the building edge. When you look at the grading plan, the site plan that we have shown, uh, that will be sidewalk all the way to the edge of the building.
You know, if this was my project, you all asked me to slide that building five feet to the west, right? For some stairs.
Obviously, you also have problems in stairs if you always have ramps for ADA compliance, so that would make it much more difficult, uh, and, uh, you know, could impede into the sidewalk area if people are trying to use the sidewalk, so we certainly don't want to block the sidewalk.
I would assume this building has ADA access somewhere else, right?
ADA access has been provided, you know, at that north entrance, that's how they were provided into that. They're actually two separate buildings and then they provided it, they've had to actually go back down a ramp to enter on the south side. So you're coming down the sidewalk, you have to actually backtrack a little bit.
Yes, okay. Looks good. See it from there?
That it. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair.
Sorry.
Subdivision committee, we talked about a few things that, um, that I'm not seeing in, in the, the current pictures. And that was, one of the, one of those items was, issues was talking about the, um, uh, area where cars drive in. In this picture, it could be on the left and there's pedestrian movement at the same time. And, uh, I wanted to see, um, a careful, deliberate delineation between where, uh, the cars are moving and where the people are moving and, um, that there would be, um, safety features there. Right now, it feels to me like it's kind of a big opening and where you're supposed to be careful of not getting run over and where you're supposed to feel safe about walking into it, uh, is, is unclear to me. Um, the other, uh, area that we talked about was when we added the three windows to the , uh, south face, that, um, there was an opportunity to do something special there as far as making some public space and, and nothing's been developed with that other than that it's just a wall. And so, um, I would like to see, uh, something more developed there, maybe there could be in the future. Um, and, uh, one thing that we didn't talk about, but would also like to see is, uh, some design, uh, making this a more green building, maybe doing some solar panels up on the roof. It seems like there's this huge area up there that, that, you know, there's an opportunity to do solar panels that would shade the cars and maybe produce the electricity that the building uses. So... Maybe we can talk about some of that stuff?
Mr. Chair, I could address, um, the things that Commissioner Winston is, is bringing up, the, you know, solar panels and creating a, a special public space along Spring Street and, um, exact details of pedestrian safety into the entrance. Some of those things will probably be addressed. The safety into that building would be more addressed at building code time, at building permit, as far as, you know, openings and signage and things like that. Certainly something that, um, you know, will be addressed. I'm not sure at this level of development if it's something the commission really can enforce or require. And I think the, the same probably goes for some of the other, um, issues with, you know, design preferences on the south side of the building. Um, you know, the, the building is meeting the, the architectural code on that side of the building and, you know, solar panels and things like that. Um, you know, those aren't required of the code either, so, um, those are probably not appropriate to be discussed at this level.
Okay. Anybody else?
Andrew, along the lines of something you just said, while I, I agree with ninety percent of what you just said, wouldn't, would it not be in our purvey at this point? I mean, I, I kind of thought what he did whenever, um, we're talking about this big wide entrance and those stairs being at the bottom of it. And, um, I kind of thought what Porter said made a lot of sense as far as, and if we didn't address it here, I mean, where...
I think especially on, on that particular topic, that the entrance, they're at, we are asking for a variance. So if there's something specific, a condition that you feel like we need to look at on that in order to grant the variance, I think that, that could be discussed and considered.
Yeah, I think it's actually, yeah, I think it's actually a very good point, actually. Um, yeah, some type of screen half-wall or something or whatever to keep somebody from getting squashed or stepping out in the traffic, I don't know. But, uh, I, I do think it's kind of a little bit odd for stairs to be coming down and kind of landing, uh, is there an architect in the room?
South. It's not loaded.
Help me understand, please!
My name is Lolly Amerez, I'm with AFHJ Architects. A hundred percent agree with all the points you made and in the south elevation, if you recall, we had shown something that looked like a, a gray blob, but it was intended to be a planter. And the comment you made was to make sure that it is low enough for the line of sight and that is, that's something we a hundred percent agree. Uh, I apologize if that adjustment hasn't been made, but it is part of what we are going to do to create a delineation between the pedestrian and, and the, uh, car traffic. Right now, in the three-D model, just shows bollards, but we're going to do something that is more, uh, attractive with a better streetscape. And on the other safety issues, uh, I agree that there are so detailed that at this point we really cannot address it in the documentation that we have for you. So, uh, that safety factor, we also did, um, extend the sidewalk concrete across the driveway, if you recall. It was showing the black on the street going in, so that pattern is going to be there. There are a lot of details that are going to be there that are not shown at this level that goes with the, um, all the downtown sidewalk designs, the brick patterns and those kinds of things will be employed in there. On the south side, we did, uh, enlarge and widen as far as we could to the edge of the sidewalk, the space that's available, with the intention of having benches and maybe a different, uh, concrete pattern that would be more like a cobblestone or something that is more cozy than just the plain concrete. But again, those level of details will be worked out as we go through the design. But, um, we created that space and it's now eight feet wide, it was six feet wide, to at least allow you to have something similar like the jamming java with just a two-chair and a small table that you can sit at and have a cup of coffee or take a break. Um, and actually, the height of the sidewalk may allow you to kind of sit at the edge and, um, take advantage of the trees that we're going to have there. So, on the record, our intention is to make that a special place, so.
Thank you, I didn't realize that, that it was wider.
Yes, yes. I didn't have that image for you before, so that today we just did that.
Thank you.
Does that...
I'm a little unclear about something, I'm sorry.
Sure.
I see the bollards going into the building, is that what you're referring to, the green blobs or whatever?
No, on the south, can we have the south elevation?
Yeah, that's, that's actually my, my request as well.
Oh, that was another drawing that I had there. Well, on the record, we're going to do it, so that drawing is not up there. But it shows a, um, kind of a rectangular shape that is between the driveway and the, um, pedestrian area, so.
Okay.
The intention is to have a planter and we discussed that, that we wanted to do something that with kind of a low-hanging plant, so it doesn't create a hazardous situation that existed for a while on the square, where cars couldn't see where they were turning, or pedestrians.
Um, I've got a question from a fellow commissioner over there. Your concern about the steps coming down, it looks like they, they let out right before the public sidewalk. Is that where your concern was, at the end of those steps or to the side of those steps, between the trafficway or both?
Well, my, my concern is that, from what you can see in the drawings at this level of detail, uh, that it's unclear that there are, uh, steps that will be taken that will make this a safe place for cars and pedestrians who very likely will not be paying attention as much as they should be at two o'clock in the morning, uh, interacting with each other.
Close the ditches, you're...
Uh-huh.
Yeah. Um, I, I think what I, what I'm kind of curious about is, it seems, and I, I know these are renderings, okay? But it seems to me like that if you look at your driveway on the left side, see the curvature, your radius of your driveway there? It seems to me like that would be a curb area that would maybe even continue into the building, just, or just up to the building at least, a little bit, so that would give that...
Create that separation?
Yeah, create that separation between, this is where we walk, this is where we drive.
Right, right.
Well, you can't block the sidewalk, though. I mean, you can't extend a curb where it's going to block the sidewalk.
You're talking about from here to here?
I'm, yeah, I'm talking about...
Oh, just back there, okay.
Curb separation would work, as you just mentioned, it creates, uh, you know, a step-down.
Yeah.
Not necessarily safe at two o'clock in the morning. I think what you had suggested more like a planter wall that will keep you from going into the driveway would be something that we are...
But that is your intent?
Yes, yes. So that they just can't go in the path of the traffic.
All right.
Yes.
That it.
Much for me.
Okay. Any other comments?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Chesser.
Um, I guess, even if it's not the appropriate place, I'll comment that I, I agree with Porter that it'd be great if there was solar on the top of this thing. I don't know when the right time to discuss that is, but I think that it's an appropriate thing for the City of Fayetteville to be considering. Other than that, I'll say that, uh, I just want to congratulate the design team. I think this is a, a really nice design. Uh, I like the way they handled the screening of the parking deck itself. Uh, I think it's aesthetically pleasing, um, and I think that it's going to be a nice addition to the City of Fayetteville. That's all.
Thank you.
Well, I'd like to say to Commissioner Chesser, actually, today is the right day to discuss that because it's Earth Day.
Well, fair enough.
Very, you just don't have any power in that area, but it's the right time to discuss.
Well, I'm going to give a, a hear, hear for it to any who may be listening. And, Mr. Chair, I'd love to hear from, from anyone who could, who could talk to us about it.
Sir, if you could, please state your name.
David Jurgens, Utilities Director and Project Manager from the City of Fayetteville for this project. Just to address the solar issue, this is being designed to lead Silver criteria. It's not going to be certified as a lead Silver building because they don't certify parking decks any longer, but it is being designed to lead Silver criteria. So we're evaluating solar, we're doing water reuse and so we're evaluating all of the options that could go into, uh, meeting that lead Silver requirement. So solar is being evaluated. At this point, most likely, it will be not fully affordable now, but we would be putting in the conduit so we could do it later and we will also be applying for grants in order to be able to, to bring so, uh, bring solar in later if that becomes a viable option.
Well, that's the kind of thing I would certainly applaud. I follow solar prices because I'm looking at doing it residentially. But if you're, if you're planning for the future so that you're running conduits so that it could be added in the future, um, I think that that's a, that's a fantastic compromise.
And we're also running some conduits so we can put in some electric chargers for electric cars.
Okay, great.
Uh, we've met with, uh, Ozarks Electric actually is interested in providing one charger for the city free of charge. Met with, uh, the University of Arkansas, they have one charger in their Garland Avenue deck. Uh, so we're looking at and evaluating that. At this point, I don't know that we'll put one in, but we will certainly put in the conduiting so we can put those in in the future.
Okay. That's, uh, knowing how solar prices go and how they probably will go, I think that's a, a satisfactory answer for me at least. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Mr. Chair, just a quick follow-up for Mr. Jurgens. How many, uh, spaces are you running conduit for so that there'll be chargers in the future? I mean, like, what's, potentially, we could have ten chargers or do you know?
Truly, it's a level of detail that we just haven't gotten to yet. Uh, it'll depend on the pipe, what route we run the piping through.
Mm-hmm.
But it's something we don't wanna come back later and punch holes through concrete in order to get to. It's a lot cheaper to put in piping right now than it would ever be in the future.
Yeah.
Edit, okay. Anyone else? Comments? Motion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Chester.
Am I gonna have to make findings, Andrew?
Yes, there are several findings to be made on conditions of approval number one. The determination of the parking garage design elements, condition number two. Variance for this fifty foot separation from doors, condition number three, is the opening of the driveway on Spring Street, and condition number four, street improvements.
Okay, Ms. Chair, I'm gonna move that this is a forward, I guess?
Approved.
Approved. I'm gonna move that we approve LSD thirteen dash four three five two with staff recommendations of approval. Determining in favor of the determinations made by staff in items number one through four.
One second. Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Chester and a second by Commissioner Winston. Mr. Garner, will you please call it out?
Pennington?
Yes.
O'Toole?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Bunch?
Yes.
Noble?
Yes.
Autry?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Chester?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, the next item. Okay. The next item is a rezone at the corner of Greg Avenue and North Street. Rezone thirteen dash forty-three forty-eight. Mr. Fulcher, could you give us a report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This property at the southwest corner of North Greg Avenue and, and North Street, zoned RMF twenty-four. There used to be a single family home there that was removed in the last couple of years. North Street is a principal arterial, Greg Avenue is a two lane local street. It takes you one block down, you're down to right up Wilson Park, pretty much. The land uses in this area are kinda a little bit of everything. Across this, across North Street is kinda more dense multifamily, but in the proximity of this piece of property, it's actually low density and low height multifamily dwellings. There's some duplexes and then single family, pretty much across the street and all the way through Wilson Park for the most part. The applicants are requesting to downzone this property from RMF twenty-four to neighborhood conservation to allow a higher density on this piece of property. This is a first for me, but it's what's necessary. The, the residential multifamily zoning designations, especially for single family, have not been updated, it's something we've talked about. They, they still require a six thousand square foot lot for a single family home, but if you connect it to another and call it a townhouse, you only need twenty-five hundred square feet. It's, it's just a code that needs to be updated. And so the best option for the applicant in this case is to find a zoning district that allows the lot size, that will allow them to develop this property at the density that they need, higher than what would be allowed under the existing zoning designation. That's the Neighborhood Conservation Zoning District. It'll allow them to develop lots on four thousand square feet and forty feet wide, much less than the RMF twenty-four zoning designation. As far as the zoning on this piece of property, we think it makes sense. There, the, the land uses in this area run the gamut of everything. This is predominantly single family and it's kinda is a mix of uses on this side of the street. I think this designation, the density that's allowed under this designation will fit right into this neighborhood and will be a good addition to it, especially at the density that, that they're attempting to provide on this piece of property. So we're recommending that the rezoning forwarded to the city council with a recommendation for approval. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fulcher. Is the applicant available?
Good evening, thank you for your time, and as Jesse stated, yes, we are downzoning it to get more density. So I'm here at the owner developer, we'll be glad to answer any questions that anyone has.
Thank you. Any member from the public here to comment to this? So you now to bring back to Commissioner. Commissioners?
Got a question for staff. Is there any concern about, I know this intersection pretty well, I guess everybody knows, but it's, it gets really congested in there, especially the Greg intersection on Greg Street specifically, I guess, on that corner. Is there any concern about splitting it up this way? And their access going forward and how that's gonna affect that intersection? Was there any thought about that?
We've looked at some conceptual site plans and, and property owners are here who could probably address how they're planning to tackle that. What we've seen, they've been showing a common driveway out to Greg Street. The access management ordinance will dictate to some degree where their access is to what street and at what separation. So we feel the separation will be provided. The current zoning designation allows them to do two single family homes. This will add one more, so I think it's a, a big increase in traffic impact or, or danger based on that change. But it's something that they're gonna have to consider. And again, what I've seen is a common driveway feeding these lots back to Greg, so they're not having to go out to North Street. Though I think they have either conversations with the neighboring property owner or maybe hoping to discuss that connecting over to their driveway because they already have an access out onto North Street. And that would be a benefit then to them to at least have that ability to, to get to that piece of property.
Agreed. Okay, thanks, I'm sorry, Jesse.
It's alright.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Chester.
Just to point out, Porter, I think we missed the applicant's name, and at least I did. When he identified himself, that's all.
Could please state your name.
Justin Jorgensen with Jorgensen Associates.
And Justin, you just heard the explanation about the problem with the access, so it's your understanding that the owner is gonna be satisfied with one common driveway in order, because of the traffic problems here?
Yes, sir, I think they've had some conversations about connecting, but they're not there yet and don't know what the result of that is. So as of right now, it'll just be one connection to Greg.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Chester.
If there's no further discussion, I think this is a fine use for this property. I pass it all the time. I think it's better than what's there right now, especially considering that they're willing to use the common driveway. I'm gonna move that we forward rezone thirteen dash four three four eight to the city council with a recommendation for approval. Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Chester and a second by Commissioner Pennington. Mr. Garner, will you please call it out?
Pennington?
Yes.
O'Toole?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Bunch?
Yes.
Noble?
Yes.
Autry?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Chester?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. The next item we have is a rezone thirteen dash forty-three fifty-nine on Huntsville Road for Come and Go. Mr. Fulcher, may I please have a report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is city-owned property, again, a project that, that we're involved in through, through ownership this time. This is the southeast corner of the Huntsville Road, Happy Hollow Road. Currently zoned I two, general industrial. In two thousand and five, the city acquired this property, it's actually a little over eleven acres, and the old Tyson, Mexican original plan is about a hundred and twenty thousand square foot building, which is pretty much gone as we're speaking tonight, from what I saw on Thursday and what another commissioner mentioned to me, what they saw in the last day or so on the property. The, the building's pretty much completely demolished at this point. Since we acquired it in two thousand and five, we developed a fire station on the, the south side of that property to split that off. And so there's about ten acres left of property. And, and at the time of the writing of this report, that building was still on, on that property, but hadn't been used. It's very, very poor condition. It's had a number of break-ins, wiring stripped from the property. It's kinda become a bit of an eyesore on that piece of property over the last couple several, last couple of years. The city council has been working and our city attorney with a land sale agreement with Come and Go LC to purchase a portion, that would be the, the northeast portion of this property for the development of a Come and Go convenience store. The commission has seen several of these developments in the city the last couple of years, certainly familiar with the product. And as part of that land sale agreement, the city council recommended that the parcel should be rezoned to neighborhood commercial C one or another zoning district agreeable to Come and Go LC. Come and Go has submitted an email saying that their desire is to rezone the property to C one to allow for a gasoline service station. I do wanna mention that the I two zoning district that exists does allow for a gasoline service station. So it's a use by right on the property today. This begins to remove an I two zoning designation that is not appropriate on this piece of property. There's some commercial zoning that surrounds this property, it's, it's like commercial, neighborhood commercial. But there's also a lot of residential in the area, and it's not really a heavy industrial area. The city has property, city shops down the street, it's not heavy industrial, and we've got some storage. It's, it's I one type industrial uses. And so this I two really is not an appropriate zoning district for this piece of property. In our findings, we kinda talk about the C one dilemma, we talked about it at agenda session. We've recommended for and against C one and C two zoning designations in the last year or two. Kind of along this, if you extend this corridor out up Huntsville, it becomes Martin Luther King. And we start heading down past Razorback, and we've seen a zoning for different land uses kind of along this corridor. And again, we've recommended for and against. Those are separate decisions that have been made. Each side is separate, and, and so I don't wanna link this decision to those because you should be looking at this decision on the merits of this piece of property. But I did bring up those other ones because we had different recommendations on those sites as well because each of those are unique. One was more part of a neighborhood and we didn't agree with it. One was surrounded by similar commercial uses, and we did feel that it was appropriate in that location on this piece of property. We do have a policy decision by the city council, part of this land sale agreement, that this property needs to be rezoned to C one, so that's there. We also have the fact that the property is zoned I two, the heaviest designation that we have in the city and not appropriate for this site, so it is truly a downzone to something much more appropriate than the I two zoning district. But then there's also just the kinda the outlining factors that I, that I put in finding five about extending within circumstances. And, and this property has those. I don't think any of the previous zonings in this area have these type of, types of circumstances. The fact is, this is an extraordinary opportunity for this neighborhood to see this site redeveloped. To see this building torn down, a hundred and twenty-four thousand square foot building that was falling apart, torn down and removed from the site, and selling a, a good portion of that building to be reused somewhere else in the United States on another project is a benefit all the way around, both, both environmentally and to this neighborhood. The city is being paid for a portion of this property, so it can be redeveloped by Come and Go. So that will go into the general fund for use on projects. They are gonna help in development of, or help with demolition. They're also helping with internal driveways or public streets, depending on how that's gonna be designed. So there's gonna be some cost share agreements with that that will help us in marketing the properties that will be left over. Commercial outlots will be left over for the city of Fayetteville to build a potentially market or use for the community as well. And then there's just gonna be the overall redevelopment of this portion of the site. This is gonna be the first step of pretty much a site that's a hundred percent concrete. It's going, a good two acres is gonna be converted over to a functional commercial establishment, which is a good thing, typically a very good thing. But the green space, the trees, all those things that are gonna be added on to the site is gonna create a, a large aesthetic improvement to this area and to this neighborhood. And that's not something normally that you see on a piece of property. One that's gonna go from such dense and tense industrial use and such poor condition and transition over very rapidly on the front end to include all of these benefits. And that is something that is unique to this shot, to this site that you would not see on those other sites that we've reviewed in those other areas. So I think that's just one more reason why the C one zoning district, though, it's not going to bring out that urban design that we look for and that we call out in our city plan twenty thirty, but it's gonna create that revitalization and that improvement in, in this neighborhood that's, that's desperately needed and under great circumstances for the community and the city, in our opinion. So we are recommending in favor of the C one zoning district in this particular instance and recommend that it be moved forward to the city council with a recommendation for approval. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fulcher. And that's, I guess, are you the applicant?
No. City staff are becoming, are becoming applicants.
I want you to grill me pretty good on this one.
If you could, please state your name.
Certainly, good evening commissioners, I'm Jeremy Pate, Development Services Director for the city of Fayetteville. As Jesse mentioned, a lot of the background on this, on this particular property. The existing Tyson facility is coming down and being sorted currently. If you drive by, I'd certainly recommend it, it's one of the largest sorting projects I've seen, recycling sorting projects I've seen on a, on a demo project. So I'd certainly invite you, encourage you to do that. This discussion began many, many years ago, and this administration has made it a priority to reduce and remove both an eyesore but a safety issue within this neighborhood. We had sometimes weekly phone calls to our fire department, to our police department about individuals stealing things out of here, breaking in. Almost every time we would secure the building, it would be unsecured again. And so it was certainly a neighborhood safety issue. The, the city was approached, the mayor was approached with an offer to sell this, this particular piece of property for the Come and Go establishment. And they were looking again at this northeast corner, which is the subject of the rezoning. You'll notice just a portion of the overall ten acres that are left. So there's just two acres that are subject to this particular zoning request. That's simply because that's where we are in the current process of, of actually closing on this property to, with Come and Go. Following the agreement to sell the property, the city council came forward with a recommendation and resolution that the city staff's gonna do a master plan with public input on this particular site. So it's gonna be a scaled down version of the neighborhood master plans like Weddington and Fayette Junction. It'll just be specific for this site. We hope to do that in July of this year. And so we'll be conducting interviews and, and looking at the different census data and demographics around this property. Again, a sort of scaled down version of what we've done, what we've done in larger master plans to review what are appropriate uses and what the rest of this site that's zoned I two should be zoned. And that will be a, a process that will, that will take to the neighborhood, bring to you as a planning commission and then take to the city council as well, recommendations on what our priority, priorities are and how this area should potentially be rezoned in the future. So I just wanna let you know that we're not stopping here, this particular, just this two acres at the, at the northeast corner, we're looking really at the entire property in, in the summer months. Jesse's mentioned a few things. There's actually a site plan that was agreed to in concept by the, by the developer. They presented that to the city council. And so we still have to go through the large scale development process, but there is no individual access, for instance, for the Come and Go onto Huntsville Road that was agreed to as part of the negotiations. So essentially, there'll be an access onto Ray Avenue and then a new sort of quasi-public street that accesses the, the traffic signal. So that will provide access both to Come and Go but other properties as they are sold and developed within the site too. So we worked very hard over a number of months and with Kit's help as well to really come up with an overall infrastructure master plan, if you will, for both access but, but also pedestrian connections into Lee and Helen and Ray. This is a neighborhood that has a very difficult time getting out of their neighborhood if you want, if they wanted to go west because there's so much traffic, there's seventeen to nineteen thousand vehicle trips per day in this particular area, east and west, and it's a major conduit for traffic. You'd think they would all go north and cross over, but they're not. There's a lot of traffic still heading west through this area. And so the, a revised signal or improved intersection here at Huntsville, I guess it's Huntsville and Huntsville, Sixth Street, that, that curve there will certainly aid the neighborhood as well in, in their access to, to the area. If, with that, I'll answer any questions if you have them.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chair, if I could add just one other thing to this report, which is, is accurate. And of course, one of the reasons we designed the interior streets is to help the Ray Avenue neighborhood be able to turn left. Eventually, we hope that, that street will also go all the way through, although it's not gonna be built initially. It will be built with further development, we think, so that they could access Happy Hollow and maybe, depending on where they're trying to go. But we will have to work with the highway department to try to get a four-way intersection light there. Right now, it's a three-way. We hope that we can get that. It's not, you know, Come and Go realizes that, that's something we're gonna try to get. We don't, we can't control the highway department. But if so, they're gonna, that's gonna be a cost share also that Come and Go will help us out on. And there's about a half acre lot immediately to the east of the road that would be coming in from the, from the traffic. And, and that's a, a kind of a little, little small pocket park, pocket park. And, and probably something where we might actually have a space for some public art. Right there is an important intersection and comes kind of like a, a kind of a second gateway in, although we already have, of course, two sixty-five going up, but here's another major intersection. And so, you know, we've tried to really improve this particular site with this development and still be able to get the taxpayers' money back from them when they initially purchased the site many years ago. the site many years ago.
Okay.
Yes, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
A member from the public here to speak to this. If you could, please state your name.
Aubrey Shepherd, Mr. Commissioners. They just took the view off that I was thinking about there. Can you easily go back to the?
With the aerial?
Yeah. Yeah, please. I don't know how you're seeing it, if it's just on this monitor, but immediately across behind the funeral home, that, which is across there. Okay, you see the various little rivulets coming down. You see the slightly woody areas that are flow areas. Some of them are natural, some of them probably had been ditched at some point. But that water, and then down further, there's water comes across. That's wetland where the funeral home is built and so forth. And it's seasonal wetland, but this season, it's been clearer. It was wetland a lot. It gets, you see it flooded over, sorry if I'm not close enough to the mic, you see it flooded over quite often, and there's a pretty scaldage of flow goes next to the fire station. And I'm uncertain, you can see how the creek forms, it's just a short ways to the West Fork and the White River. But I'm not sure what the city property extends south of the fire station any, or is it?
Yes, it does. But that's not what is subject tonight. We're not rezoning that property, only the property up on the northeastern corner, that two acres up there.
Well, the reason I ask that, Mr. Chairman, is that's really critical area down below there. And, you know, Ray Avenue, where it goes into the old junkyard, it floods that whole area down there, and it's a normal thing. It shouldn't be impaired. I just hope nobody decides to clear it out and get rid of the vegetation and build something on it. And, but the same thing across the street up there, that's all, you know, recharge area. And down below where this development is seen.
Mr. Shepherd?
I'm just, I'm sorry.
Well, if you could, let's try to stick to the rezone area.
What I'm saying is you've got a lot of water coming in together.
Well, there's, at this point, with what we're, what's under consideration right now tonight.
Right, okay.
There's absolutely nothing that we can speak to in regard to that. I mean, we can talk about.
It's just a point of information I wanted to share.
I understand that.
That we need, in developing that site, need to be cognizant of trying to avoid increasing the flooding immediately down.
Well, I'm sure that whenever the project comes together, that staff will be more than
Thank you, sir.
Consciousness of how that's put together.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just, I know we're not on the topic, and I don't want to stay on that topic, but obviously, looking at the site, it's almost 100% paved and with any development, regardless of what it is, green space is going to be generated out of concrete. So certainly improvements to.
It'll be hard to maintain the current flow along it.
It'll be decreasing flow also, yeah, for sure.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Hoskins.
Yeah, like Jesse said, sometimes redevelopment, sometimes development is good, period. I guess one of the points I wanted to make, Mr. Page, was this property is owned I-2, and while I assume does, while I-2 does allow for service stations, I don't think I-2 allows for the retail component of this type of service station, does it?
It's one and the same. I mean, convenience store, gas station, yeah, it's just listed under U-Cheat at 18 as drive-through, restaurant, and gas station is one U-Cheat that includes all those.
I knew there was something in there in the code, though, about the retail component, but, okay, thanks.
Commissioner Woods?
Let's officially close public comment.
Unless you'd like to.
Yeah.
Bring someone back up?
No, no. If we're done with that.
Oh, yeah, 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 it's closed. Brought it back, sorry.
And so I'm going to move to forward to city council with a recommendation for approval, rezone 13-4359 for 1851 East Huntsville Road, Come and Go.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Winston and a second by Commissioner Chesser. Mr. Gorman, please call the roll.
Pennington?
Yes.
Honcho?
Yes.
Good.
No.
Winston?
Yes.
Bunch?
Yes.
Noble?
Yes.
Autry?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Stain.
Chesser?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, let's see. The last item is administrative item 13-4353 for base code amendments. Could we get the? Could we get the report from staff?
Sure. Staff is proposing some comprehensive changes to the Unified Development Code, and this is the third time this has been, will have been heard at the planning commission meeting, and we went over an extensive work session, an agenda session, going over the ins and outs of the code changes on Thursday, and I passed out some materials, some exhibits kind of depicting graphically what some of the changes to the code are proposed. So I won't go any further than that. I'll just leave it open for discussion and questions. Thanks.
Discussion.
Commissioner, what about the public comment? Is there any member from the public to speak to this?
That's you, Aubrey.
I certainly apologize.
I didn't have time with this busy weekend to look at your agenda and see what those changes are. So if you're not going to share them, you have shared them in an agenda session, I assume, but.
I don't think there are any changes from the way it was presented the last time. Is that right?
Yeah, this has been presented, this is, it's been presented two times at the planning commission meeting. This is the third time. We also presented it at the agenda session.
There's no wetlands involved.
No weapons involved. And therefore, the public, people like me, should know, have had the opportunity. That's all I'm asking.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Clarify, Andrew, we did make a minor change, did we not?
We didn't, yes, we did.
From the last one.
I can pull that up. You want to pull that up? Let's see here.
One of the comments from the agenda session, we changed something.
Yes, it'll take just a minute. We added one sentence that you guys did not see.
Table it, table it.
There it is.
Full disclosure, staff just brought that to your attention.
Yeah, but we had to ask, huh?
Aubrey had to ask.
Aubrey had to ask, that's right.
The other thing we did is just to look at scale. I know at the last meeting, there was some discussion about creating edge condition with walls, the supplemental elements, walls versus vegetation, and how imposing a wall might be. Went around the square and Block Avenue and measured some of those. What we're recommending is 36 inches to 42 inches. Again, is to provide the edge condition in a more urban environment that oftentimes vegetation doesn't do. Around the square, they vary from about 25 inches to 30 inches. On Block Avenue, as you're going down, they actually get up to the 42, 44 inch height. But if you walk down Block Avenue, you don't really, it doesn't feel like there's an imposing wall there. 42 inches is about right here to me. So again, it's not really to screen a parking lot. I mean, you're not going to be able to screen an entire parking lot unless you have shrubs that are above eye level. And that's not necessarily always the intent. A portion of it is screening, especially some mechanical and utility type equipment that certainly can help. But really, our intent here is when a developer applicant can't provide that building frontage to help that urban edge, these supplemental elements, such as a wall, a perforated wall, can certainly help do that. It's not 100% of the entire frontage, but we feel we've seen in other cities where it works very well. And actually, some of the projects that I think Andrew went through with you in the agenda session shows how it can work very well, some of which are actually even more than what we're recommending in terms of their canopies and colonnades, things of that nature.
Yeah, so to point out the change that we did make from last time to this time, you can see the highlighted in green, you probably can't read it, but under the section of the code where we've added in these supplemental elements that can count towards your frontage requirement, we've added in a sentence here that says, "Similar features leading the intent of this subsection subject to the approval of a zoning development administrator." What that just means is if a designer, architect comes up with some sort of creative architectural solution or some other solution that meets the intent of kind of creating what we're looking for with the form-based codes, the zoning administrator, who's Jeremy, could look at that and potentially approve that. So like, the colonnade-type feature that we showed you on that bank in New Orleans, it's not a true colonnade. It was actually just kind of a faux architectural treatment.
Does faux mean fake?
Yes. So that type of thing could be approved. So that, we realized that, you know, we needed to add that to the section of code.
I think that's a good improvement, and I actually really do like your diagram that you handed out with showing the small walls going out. This one here, instead of what you showed us there, I wonder if you could replace that and kind of show it here in the code section. I really think that that can help a developer a lot to understand what would be acceptable.
We could use all the help we could get, really.
I think the other idea to.
Those developers would be on to help.
The other reason we wanted to add that section is just like you just had the conversation about the parking garages, and when that code section was originally drafted, it was any one of these items, not maybe a combination thereof. And so there may be someone who proposes a partial colonnade, a partial garden wall, a partial hedge, or a fence with brick columns that, you know, may be more substantial than your standard fence. So we want to be able to at least give them credit for doing that without having to bring a variance before you every time that they propose a project. So that was really the intent behind that, adding that section.
I did want to point out, too, just to, you know, to talk about the edge treatment that we're looking for here. This is just a picture I took today of the KUAF building just down the street from us, and they did a similar thing. They have a small site wall screening their parking lot, matches the building, you know. At this point, this is like about 32, 33 inches, so it's a little bit shorter than what would be required, but it's really getting towards what we're looking for. I just wanted to point that out. Like Mr. Page said, it's not a huge six-foot tall wall. That would be too tall, too imposing, but it's more of a smaller seat wall.
We actually had the conversation, because this is university property, they didn't have to meet our standards. However, their staff wanted to try to meet all of our downtown master plan standards in zoning as much as possible. Their particular building lot, you can see they don't meet their minimum buildable street frontage, their width, just because they were reusing existing structure for lead credits and things of that nature. But they actually introduced these types of features, the walls specifically, to help, again, create that urban edge, as opposed just to having some plants in front of the parking lot. So we feel like this is a good example of the treatment that we would, that we might see.
So how much shorter is that wall than what you're going to require now?
Like two inches. I mean, you know, I took a tape measure, this tall end meets the requirement. Down at this low end, it would be too short. They would have to, it would have to be a little bit taller.
Let me close the, or close the floor to public comment and bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Page, quick question. Now, these regulations are under form-based code zones or whatever. In this case, I mean, of course, this was under the downtown. And those walls are right up against the sidewalk, it looks like. And so we had a discussion a while back or whatever about walls being next to sidewalks, and I think we even changed our code.
The shy distance.
The shy zone, right. Yeah, remember that debate a couple of years ago? It was fun. But so now the, now even in residential and even the other zoning, under other zonings or what have you, the wall, short walls like this can be built right up to the sidewalk.
They can, and a lot of the time, that depends on the width of the sidewalk. So as you're aware, the shy distance, a lot of the ones that we talked about when we had this debate, I think last year, they were four or five-foot wide sidewalks. In all of our urban conditions where you're building a street, a building right up next to the sidewalk, there's a minimum eight-foot wide sidewalk. So you have plenty of distance horizontally to meet that shy distance requirement. But yes, we did change the code. Off the top of my head, I don't remember what it is, but it varies with the wall height. The shy distance varies with the wall height. So at a certain level, you can build it directly adjacent to the sidewalk, and there is no shy distance, and as you get higher, it steps back.
So we can encourage this type of development even in our standard zoning areas?
That's correct.
Good. Great.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Chesser.
A question for staff. On that sentence that you added, giving the development administrator the power to approve similar items, thank you for pulling that up. While I completely and fully trust the current zoning development administrator to make good decisions, I wonder, does, does planning commission have oversight over these items in any way, or is that 100% up to the zoning development administrator in the future to make decisions? What constitutes similar, I suppose?
The way the, all the ordinances work today is unless the planning commission has purview over those decisions, then it's up to my office to make those decisions. However, most decisions can also be appealed, and so if the property owner doesn't like the decision and say, I don't, for instance, me or someone who follows me says, we don't think this is a similar feature, meeting the intent of the subsection, the applicant could appeal to you as a planning commission to make that determination. Conversely, if we approved something, we have to, just as you note, if we approve something administratively, then someone else could get a city council member to appeal on behalf of a resident as well. So there are definitely appeal sections within our codes. However, the standard operating procedure, no, it would not come before the planning commission unless it's a large-scale development for.
Yeah, and I'm not asking, does it, I understand why it would not normally come before us because this is attempting to take work off of our shoulders, I assume, so that you can go ahead and get that done. Would there be a procedure for us to appeal it, for example, to review it if, let's say, in the future, someone disagreed that it was similar on this commission, could they say, "We want to review that item"?
You could talk to your alderman and see if they had appeal.
In that case, I would have.
The appeal then goes to the city council.
We would not, I see. So we would not see it in that case. Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you. I'm not sure, I'm totally uncomfortable with that. I just wanted to know how the procedure would work. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, Chesser.
I'm pretty happy with the code amendments made by staff. I really appreciate the work session we did on Thursday. I thought that was very enlightening. And given that, I'm going to move, this is a forward, correct?
Yes. Recommendation approval, yeah.
Well, how do you know I'm going to recommend to approve?
I can feel it.
I'm going to move that we forward administrative item 13-4353 with the recommendation of approval to the city council. Second.
Okay, I have a motion for, from Commissioner Chesser and by Commissioner Pennington.
Pennington?
Yes.
Honcho?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Bunch?
Yes.
Noble?
Yes.
Autry?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Chesser?
Yes.
Motion carries.
It's unanimous. Was there any, did you guys have any comments or announcements or anything?
No.